All right, I'm going to call the June 16th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can I please get order of attendance by roll call?
Bonin, present.
Cortez, present.
Davis, present.
Davis, present.
All right, Morris, present. I do have an announcement this evening. The Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts Silver Award has been awarded to Sierra Brulee of Douglas. We got a letter from the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Mass. So, asking if we would please consider sending a congratulatory message of commendation from the Board of Selectmen to the Girl Scouts who have earned the prestigious Girl Scout Silver Award. It is the highest achievement a Girl Scout can earn in scouting. It's a significant accomplishment as earning the award requires many years of challenge and commitment to service, leadership, career exploration, and take-action projects. Recipients have to demonstrate the ability and skill in goal-setting, planning, implementation, relating to others, and creating a project that will benefit the greater community in a sustainable way. They're proud to present for our consideration the Silver Award Girl Scouts on the attached sheet. The work these young women is a lasting gift of service to their communities. Each Girl Scout that is listed is highlighted is a member of your constituency. The remaining Girl Scouts are other members of the Girl Scout of Central and Western Mass who have earned the Silver Award this year. And there is, the only one that is in our constituency would be Sierra Brulee of Douglas. There's probably another 30 names, but I don't think I need to go down through all those. But the Board of Selectmen has also put together a certificate of excellence on behalf of the Board of Selectmen's for the honorable achievement of the prestigious Girl Scout Silver Award. And I'll sign that and we'll get that out to her at the close of business today.
Excellent.
So, I'm assuming that's probably like Eagle Scout status for the Girl Scouts. About what it sounds like. That's all I have, so we can move into the first order, which is town meeting updates with the town moderator. One is ADA compliance and budgetary numbers. Keith, I'm assuming that you got the memo today from Mark, our building official regarding Soldier's Field, and not being optimal for town meeting for ADA compliance reasons?
Yeah. It's all understandable. Again, after receiving that, I've run over to use the football field. Does he make all that noise?
I believe it is.
Hal, could you mute your computer?
Is that my problem?
I think so.
Yeah, it sounds like it's getting some feedback coming from you, my friend.
Right, lower the volume, is that better?
No, there's a mute button.
Then I can't speak, okay.
There we is.
Yeah, I checked, I went over and checked out the football field. The only thing that, I'm not sure how to do is, to figure out how to get electricity over there. Yeah, I'm assuming, I think you're still feeding back, Hal.
Okay. What actually do?
Hal, on the bottom, yeah, Hal, on the bottom of the screen, you'll see the red hang-up button.
Yeah.
About three tabs over, or three icons over, there's a mute audio button.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yeah, hit that.
My job calling. Excuse me.
Perfect, okay.
There you go. So, you know, the only thing I noticed that seemed like it might be an issue was getting electricity out there. I'm sure they have to have some way to do it. You know, I also don't know what their feelings are about putting up a tent and how to do the tent and all that stuff. But, so it's definitely something we'll have to look about and see what our options would be over there. But, you know, it's kind of on first glance, that's really the only issues that I saw. Also, the, I believe we would need to get four bodies, which would add to the expense. So, you know, it's, there's, there's issues with it, but, you know, over Soldier's Field, I don't believe there's any, there's any parking spaces that are, that are actually lined off for ADA compliance. Having walked over there plenty of times, I can understand this point about the road being a little rocky.
All right, so the hurdle for the football field is power, right?
Power, will they give us permission to put a tent up? I'm not familiar with what sort of layer on the field, but if it's, you know, turf or if it's...
It's grass.
Grass.
It's grass, I believe, right. I don't know if there's irrigation in there, I can't remember.
I'm not sure on the irrigation side, I don't...
Oh, they have, I think they have that. I think power and they'll be very protective of the track, so...
Which is rubber.
And that will come, all of that will come out if and when we talk to the school about using the facility, they'll certainly share their concerns. But there's got to be, I think we wired that for potential future light use or outdoor light installation. Whether that will provide the power source you need to have your amplifiers and things, I don't know, but there's got to be power up there.
If there isn't, the SIR team has four generators.
Just how do we get it?
Yeah. Keith, worst-case scenario, if we couldn't get power to it from the school, so the SIR team in town has generators at their disposal, there's four of them, that would be more than enough to get you guys powered up?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have a follow-up with the school to get permission to use it, I guess. And then I do have, we have budgetary numbers from Creedon and Company of Worcester for an 80-by-160 tent and chairs. That will accommodate about 200 seats, and the added sidewalls is a worst-case scenario. The cost with the walls would be $14,712.78. The total cost with half-walls would be $14,322.78, and no-walls is $13,932.78. And that's delivery and setup.
I'm looking at a drawing on the back of that, and it shows the chairs, they appear to be fairly far apart. Is that maintaining social distancing in the quote?
Yeah, it's showing, it shows up on the 80-foot section, they're showing six feet apart.
Six feet, okay. So, we'd have 200 people and we'd maintain social distancing?
Correct.
You said 14,000?
That is correct.
Seven twelve.
If we did no-walls on it, if we got a nice day, it would be $13,932.78.
So, I guess at this point, I'm, what would it cost just to rent some chairs?
To just rent chairs? I don't think we quoted out just the chairs.
Heck of a lot less than 14,000, I think.
Total, so...
Well, Taylor Rental only offered a pole tent of 30 by 60, so we'd need two, and those are $1,300 apiece.
Okay.
Central Mass Party Rentals didn't have any tents available at all. So, if we did the Taylor Rental option, you're looking at, I would probably assume $1,299 for the tent, and then, I don't know if we have a chair cost in there as well. So, I'd probably round up and say probably $1,500, $1,600 times...
$2.20 a chair on the Creedon quote.
Yeah, it'd probably be comparable to Taylor Rental for chairs.
Sounds a little more reasonable to me.
Yeah, I just think that Taylor usually leaves it up to you to set it up.
Oh, mine.
At least they did, we did, I used them for my daughter's graduation party at the house, and it was a big pole tent, and it was up to us to set it up. They didn't even offer a crew to do it.
Can we inquire with the fire department and see if, or highway department and see if maybe that's something they could assist with?
Absolutely. So, I think we'd probably want to just follow up with Taylor Rental, get a firm price on the chairs, and see if they're now offering a setup and tear-down fee.
Okay.
Could we wait closest to the town meeting and see what the weather's going to be a few days, and then order the tent, or maybe we don't need a tent at all?
I don't know how much lead time they need.
They usually look for two weeks. So, it's not something that we have to do right now, but I mean...
Usually, they're asking for a couple of weeks out.
I don't think that there's any huge events that usually take place in September that we'd be trying to conflict or battle with.
The only thing we'd be battling with is restaurants, depending on what phase things were in.
A good chunk of them are battling that out now.
Yeah.
So, but we still have more homework to do on that side of it anyway, and get at least a firm price on it. And I think as the demand goes up, then the cost will go up as well. So, if all of a sudden the restaurants are starting to be taxing on Taylor Rental, that could turn from 13 to twice that overnight.
Yeah.
The first one, that was a hell of a lot higher than what I'd anticipated it being. I didn't expect it to be...
Yeah, I wonder if it's kind of like what you're saying, it's just that it's terminated with supply and demand thing?
It could be. Any thoughts, Mr. Administrator?
None.
None?
I wasn't aware of the Creedon quote, the last time I spoke to Suzanne, she had spoken to Taylor in Central Mass. I put $3,600 into the budget because there's going to be a cost.
Yeah.
And I also had to change FinCom's budget because they're going to do three meetings in fiscal '21.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
So, you're adding the ATM in September, so they'll have to pay for that. So, I was already getting to, you know, $6,000, $7,000 to have a town meeting. Although, we would have paid that, some of that mailing cost this year, didn't. But, you know, it's still... But I can't see, to me, 14 grand, at that point, you might as well just go to the schools and clean the auditorium and have professional cleaners clean it.
Right.
At that level.
Yeah, which is what we were trying to avoid that cost.
Or you just take the risk, you know, you set up for town meeting, and if it's got to be, you know, if it's got to be postponed, you know, for a week, you know, to a rain date or whatever it happens to be, you know, then so be it. But, yeah, I mean, it just, when we know that, you know, budget's going to be estimated as it is, then, you know, and spend 13 grand on town meeting for a tent, just seems...
Now, the legislature has authorized towns to have town meeting outside of their boundaries if they need to. Is there any function hall anywhere near this place?
Serendipity Hall, but I don't think it's big enough.
I don't think serendipity's big enough.
Yeah, I didn't think...
The Sturbridge House.
No church.
What about a movie theater if they're still closed?
Movie theater potentially, but again, that's tricky to try and rent one of those out, and you'd have to be very punctual with how quick you want to get in and out of that. The only other thing I can think of would be this place at the Sturbridge House, they have a facility plenty large enough.
Oxford is hosting their town meeting tonight at the Valley Chapel.
Valley Chapel, because they have, what, 350 scenes there?
Um, I'll let you know after tomorrow how long it goes, but I thought it sat more than that. I think that's why they changed to that venue. The Oxford High School was not even 400 acres of Valley Chapel, more than that.
PV.
Oh, Valley Chapel, yeah, Valley Chapel's huge, huge.
And they actually just have a news tomorrow night, so Keith, you can probably reach out to Ed Mahare and see how well.
Yeah, well, they've had it there before, haven't they?
They have, but tomorrow we'll probably institute a post-visit thing and, you know, see if they can get money.
It is a really big room. I mean, I'm familiar with the facility because my mom attends church there, and we had a funeral there for a family member. It's an awfully big place, and it's not that far from Douglas. People know where it is.
There's that or Pleasant Valley Country Club. They have a function hall there that's monstrous, it'll hold 500.
16, there's the, I think it's the grand view.
Well, we'll ask Suzanne to research those possibilities as well. I'm sure there's, I don't know about the church, but the other places, there'd be a fee.
Right, probably $1,500 room rental.
Douglas State Forest? Wallam Lake?
What was that?
Douglas State Forest or Wallam Lake. Do it from the bolt ramp.
Right.
There you go.
Well, we are hardy New Englanders, I don't think of September, early September, what day are we doing this?
The 12th, I mean, it should be...
Saturday.
Yeah, a Saturday, yeah.
70 degrees and Sunday...
Right, we're going to spend 15 grand on a tent that's still going to use. If we have the opportunity to have a rain date, I'd say let's go, let's go with 200 chairs and a microphone.
We're at the football field?
Yeah. Yeah, and a couple tables.
Sorry, I'm eating my dinner.
Two tables and a microphone.
Well, well...
Yeah. I'm just pretending I didn't hear that.
All right, yeah, that's probably the better way to go.
All right, so we got more homework to do.
I think so, it's no easy answer here.
But, yeah, 14 grand's way out, no?
All right, so I'll reach out to Ed, you know, next week and see how things went. You know, if you guys want to reach out to the school and just kind of see what we'd be looking at for that.
Yeah, we can do that. All right, so we'll reach out and at least, would just be school committee that would give us permission for land use, wouldn't it? And that is what we will do.
I would do that sooner rather than later, though. I had heard that the two homecoming games between Sutton and Douglas are happening early this year. I don't know if it would be as early as the 13th, but, you know, the field might not even be available. That's something to look into quick.
I'll reach out to the, who's the new chair of school committee?
Becky?
All right, I'll reach out to the chairman of school committee and start the process anyway, or at least get the conversation going. Is there anything else on this one? You kind of beat it up pretty good. All right, so number two is interdepartmental transfers and possible votes. I see on my agenda, it says that there are none this evening.
It's my understanding, and there are none in the magical red folder.
So, none it is. So, brings us to the important one, the July 2020 spending plan and possible votes. So, I have, what we all have in our packet, is the email in a packet that came from Gene, and I'm sure Matt was on it. So, FY 2021, other expenditures budget due July, August, September, 1/12th, which is how we've got it all, putting it together. But the way I see it right now, we have payroll for July at $110,000, facilities at $400, technology at $66,665, and other at $3,800, for a total for July of $180,865. And that's the town side, right?
No, that's the schools.
That's the schools. Sorry?
I just want to remind people, it's a little different because these teachers are paying, they're educating over the summer, but they're charging for the FY 20 budget. But what you see before you from the school side is really the admin voting in payroll. That's why the payroll seems low for them.
Okay. So, then we have FY 20 transfer station salaries. For July 20th, $5,050, expenses of $18,821, and total transfer station enterprise of $23,871. So, the 20 budget number for the transfer station would be $23,871.42.
We'll round up to $23,872.
Okay.
Now, I just, DOR does say this 1/12th is a little different. It has to be a minimum of 1/12, so we will not be spending that amount on the transfer station in July because our biggest bill for the transfer station is keeping track. So, the July expenses is actually 8 in line with the lady, but we do have to put a minimum of 1/12 in there, so that's why that's $23,872.
Understood. Thank you, Gene. Brings us to water and sewer, while they're separate, but the same, so the sewer salaries...
The one combined account, which is broken up.
Yep, thank you, Gene. So, for the sewer, it's the same account, but on the sewer side of this account, July 20 budget for salaries is $20,000, expenses of $34,175, and debt of $98,476. And then, on the water side, $20,000 for salary, $38,325 for expenses, and debt of $100. And that brings the total water sewer expense line item to $211,076. And then I have...
That's just backup for debt, you don't need to look at it.
Oh, okay, so the big, long one that's in here. So, that, this spreadsheet, Matt, this longer one, is this the... This is us, right? This is the municipal side?
No, that's debt.
That's debt.
So... I have a hard time talking about numbers if we don't take a path that is clear. I'm going to go to the, this paragraph in Gene's email. Municipal and school, added together for purposes of meeting the requirement, must total $2,741,523. Whether we plan to spend that much or not, and we don't, that's the number we would, minimum number we have to submit to DOR.
Okay.
So, the schools, being as low as they are, at $180,865, which is a tiny pittance of their actual annual budget, the town's request, regardless of any math we do, it has to be $2,560,658. Am I right, Gene? I mean, just by default, that's what we have to ask for on the municipal side. So, this exercise that I've been torturing myself with, really, in the end, is kind of pointless because what we do plan on spending is about, not about, it's $2,349,725 because we take that real big retirement piece that we pay in July in full in order to get a early payment discount from the retirement board. It's just about, it's over a million dollars of that, and the rest is largely payroll and any expenses that are front-loaded into July, which are all of our dues and membership costs, a lot of our licensing costs for our IT, and then just about 1/12 of the expense budget for the various departments. So, that's what I got us to, was 2349725, and it's short, so we have to ask for 2560658 so that our total with the schools will meet the minimum requirement. And we'll switch gears, as you can see from the schools projected, this would be the first page of your backup. By September, they'll be up to 1.1 million.
Okay.
September is low on the town side, but we should, we'll probably be very close to the target level. BBT doesn't hit until August.
And that's their assessment, that 319? We have no students at Norfolk Aggie next year?
No, we have plenty.
Yeah, you jinxed that.
But I don't think that's, I don't know why that's shown at zero, but it's probably because we don't get billed until...
We've made Norfolk Aggie at the end of December and June, made it twice a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And actually, DOR said that all BBT and tuitions for Norfolk Aggie and interest in charge under the school budget, would still go against our 1/12 budget, it would be under the school line and not the municipal line, which is totally different than county budget.
All right, so, long story short, based on the 1/12 ruling that we have to live by, our total budget for July is $2,741,523.
Yep.
And that's what we need to vote on this evening?
Yes.
How do we word the motion appropriate?
No, I think you're requesting authorization from the Department of Revenue to spend that figure, $2,741,523 for the combined municipal and school general fund expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
For me, you actually need to approve the spending plan.
All right, so we'd want a motion to approve the spending plan as presented?
Let's get rid of mine then. I would withdraw my motion.
Well, I think you could combine it, approve the spending plan as presented and request DOR to deficit spend, that wording, you have to approve spending.
So, do we have to use the term deficit spend?
No, it's, the town clerk asks to certify that you approve the spending plan. When we put this into Gateway, the town clerk's certifying your vote, and then I'm certifying the budget that you approved tonight, the spending spend that you approved tonight.
I would then...
So, DOR said that you are approving the spending plan.
You want me to help you with the motion, Dave?
No, I would amend my motion to add that we are approving the spending plan as presented.
And requesting the $2,741,523.
That was the first one, yeah, that was already in there.
Just making sure for the record.
I will second the amendment.
Thank you.
So, the motion with an amendment has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Bonin, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morris, aye. All right.
Am I still feeding back to you guys?
You actually are, yes.
Yeah, a little bit, it's not as bad as it was, but...
So, okay, I'll disappear in the voice for a while.
Yeah, we also need a vote on the enterprise funding plan.
That's the 230... That's the 234948 number? Anybody want to make a motion on that one?
If you have the amount, go ahead and do it.
So, make a motion to approve the enterprise funding amount of 234,948.
I'd second that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morris, aye. Okay. Are we good on the finance side for right now, then? I think so. Ratify memorandum of agreement between Telstone and SUN and the school department and possible votes.
I solicited Attorney Mazur's advice in coming up with appropriate language, which we inserted in...
So this is the bus contract.
I'm sorry. My mistake. Go on. I heard contract and I was off.
You got very excited over there.
I did.
He practiced that on the way here.
I've been practicing all day.
Do you want me to read you this memorandum of agreement?
No.
It's quite a mouthful.
I guess I don't understand why the board of selectmen would ratify it. I actually don't.
Nor do I.
I'm glad that you have the opportunity to discuss it. It's on the agenda.
So, long story short, it looks like the district will pay the contractor at the rate of 68% of the full value for the transportation services to and from the school beginning March 16th through the remainder of this fiscal year. Does this include utilizing them for the food program?
No, it's a separate contract. So, again, to back up and try to get to some context, the most recent bill that passed the Massachusetts Legislature authorized school departments to pay vendors for value received even after school has been closed. The concept was to try to keep, to not have your vendors go bankrupt, I guess, and to pay them for expenses that were, may have been incurred at the beginning of the contractual relationship that were necessary for providing all the services up until the point where schools were closed. So if you put your reasonable person hat on, if I own a bus company and I've gone out and bought three buses because I needed to, I still owe on those notes. And I still have to, I paid my insurance premiums in fullback at the beginning of the year, and it wasn't my intention to not run my buses. So there are fixed costs associated with the business that you can legitimately say the town and school department should pay because the services rendered for most of the year up to the last quarter were completely contingent upon money that the vendor paid out to their relationships. But we shouldn't be paying for labor or fuel or any other incidental expenses related to the actual day-to-day operation of the buses for that time period when they weren't running. So this was the, the concept here was that under Massachusetts general law, you don't pay for services that you didn't receive, right? So you could say, if you were being a purist, I'm not going to pay the bus contract at all from the day the governor closed the schools forward because we didn't receive the service. That was perceived as a fundamental unfairness, and thus, a permissive statute was passed that said you may pay. The school department arrived at this conclusion, this memorandum. I can never get what I asked for, when I asked for the backup, how did you get to And I don't want a PDF, I want to see a spreadsheet that breaks out the costs that were shared by Telstone and how that number was arrived at. I never got that, and I think 68% is probably close because running school buses is a heavily capitalized business, that your expenses are your equipment. And Telstone was nothing short of very cooperative and helpful and very reasonable when it came to the food program and providing the service they provided, which was about 1,500 bucks a month. It wasn't a lot of money.
No.
So, I'm inclined to say that there isn't, while this is far from perfect, I don't, I don't have a leg to stand on either to say that it should be ratified or not. I don't know where this 68% came from. I do believe it is fair to pay the vendor for the expenses they incurred in association with setting up their business, and we do want them to stay in business because I'm not entirely sure anybody would serve the valley if this company went under. Everybody would be scrambling. They may not get the same deal.
I appreciate the help that Telstone have given us, and I'm just going to, oh, I guess today's my day to just be a jerk. I have zero confidence in the business manager and their prep work that came into coming up to this negotiation, and unless she's willing to provide to you supporting data as to how she arrived at this number, because I do have confidence in what you do, I'm not going to vote on it. I just, based off of the lack of cooperation that we've had during this COVID-19 crisis between us and the school department and the ongoing track record with failure to provide data when we ask for it, I don't feel confident that she has any place doing good-fate negotiations with any of our vendors. And that's...
If I could just add something, this was not the town of Douglas that worked alone on this. We were with two other districts, and one was Blackstone, and Matt, you can correct me, the other one, I mean, being Upton. So what they did is they grouped towns together that used the same vendor, and they worked out the negotiation. So it wasn't just the town of Douglas that negotiated that. The other thing to that, and if you look into the contract, I can't find my copy, is that they were going to give some consideration in the FY21 budget, which would also come down.
Yeah, bullet point, again, my feedback was ignored, but bullet points are ridiculously unprofessional. This is a contract, so why don't we label sections so that we can refer to numbers? But it's Section C, Bullet Number 3, I guess.
Hold on, let me count that.
Fiscal year 2021, the contracted rates will remain frozen at the original rates for the fiscal year 2020. There's value to that...
Yeah.
...of unknown final determined value, right? So how many times are we going to run all of these different buses and services? Because it varies, the actual final dollar amount that we pay varies. It doesn't really vary for the mainstream population, it varies on the sped side. And I assume this contract deals with the contracted services for both mainstream transportation and any extra provided through special education. Yeah, I don't want to overharp on the point. I just, when you deal with financial folks, the first thing you get is a spreadsheet that says, okay, well, this is, this is how we arrived at this in this negotiation. It's a number we can defend. And I don't, I can't say that, and that's, you know, that's just part of...
Would you feel...
I assume we didn't approve the original bus contract?
We had a lot to do with the original bus, well, did you mean, did you formally approve it? No selectmen did.
Exactly.
You did not. The town was involved in that contract by, if you recall, forcing the school department to hire a consultant to determine how many bus routes were actually necessary to bring all the kids to school, and we ended up, the consultant identified the possibility of eliminating three routes.
We dropped one.
We dropped one because we turned logic on its side. We couldn't do an RFP, if you remember. We can't do an RFP because that would involve qualitative analysis. We don't have any qualitative measurements. So we did an IFP, got one bidder, took the price, and then we hired a consultant to reduce the number of routes. All of the arguments made against reducing the number of routes were qualitative arguments. So, yeah, I tear my hair out about this one. I don't know, though, if the fair solution is to not pay Telstone this late in the fiscal year for something they negotiated in good faith. I'm taking the opportunity to discuss what I think, and hopefully a new superintendent is paying attention, that there's got to be a professional manner to arrive at financial representations and documents, especially if it's a percentage of a total. How exactly, where did you, where did you draw the line to say what the base of the six, what are you multiplying 0.68 times?
Right.
Is that redundant?
No.
What is it, 6.8 times of what? That's redundant.
Multiplying by.
Oh, yeah. What's the, what's the, what's the, whatever the mathematical term, it's a multiplier, a multiply can, or whatever. But you know what I'm trying to say. It's 0.68 times x.
What is x?
What is x?
And I don't feel like solving for x right now.
I can't solve for x, I don't have enough information.
I'm a little curious, Jean, are you still there?
I am.
Thank you. This was, this was collaboratively done with a couple of other districts. I take it there was one negotiation on behalf of all the districts?
The other two were regionals. So when their school committee passed on it, that was it.
I'm just curious as to who did the actual negotiating.
That I can't remember. I know it was a collaborative effort, I don't know who, you know, as Matt would say, provided the Excel spreadsheet, I don't know the answer to that. I believe the board has to approve this thing below that in order for me to pick, unless that proves one of the virgin's law.
I would say Matt had asked why this is even before us, and Matt, if you count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, on the seventh bullet, it does appear that the chief executor of the town will sign it, and I'm sure at that point you're looking for guidance from this board as to whether we want to play 0.68% of a number.
Well, I think this is you, this is not me.
Yeah.
I'm the procurement officer, so you could be dicey, you could say, which who is it?
Yeah.
But ultimately, it is you, I believe.
I don't mind paying...
If you're reading that bullet point, I guess, there have been so many things changed about who authorizes what, I guess I should have read it. I lost count after bullet 3.
My, my, I don't mind paying someone as a good business partner either. I am cognizant of that and the small business and everyone trying to make it, and the fact that if this company were to go under, we may have a hard time servicing our children. Having said that, I mean, you're basically asking for a blank check of 0.68 of times whatever. I would hold off and maybe look to see if we can't, in fact, because of our inaction today, get some data that will prove that...
I guess I, I don't want to have a vendor pay because of our frustration with, I don't even know what to, with somebody that should be providing the data that they're asked for from the school. And this has been a longstanding perpetual frustration that this board has whenever we ask for anything that comes from the finance end of the school, and their business manager just does not seem to wish to comply. And with that being said, I mean, if, I trust Matt implicitly, if he feels that it's a relatively fair deal, then, you know, we may have to take one on the chin and do it because I think going back and asking again for a spreadsheet and saying, how did you come up with this number? And, you know, help us solve for x, I think it would result in three more PDFs showing up that are about as clear as mud, and then probably a lot of balking and squawking and pushback, and we'd still be sitting right where we are today.
I'm going to echo mostly what you said. My trust is in Matt here, and you have to sign off on this. At the beginning of this subject, you represented that you were unhappy with the information that would have buttressed that number of 68%. I think when you're happy, I'm happy. I don't know how to put it any clearer than that. You have to sign off as per this agreement, or you don't have to. I think when you've received enough information, I will say, I'm a little uncomfortable intruding into this, and I think Hal brought up a good point earlier, that we didn't approve this original contract. And I don't want to either give the appearance or start a new trend here that we're going to start vetting these contracts or vetting any changes. But on the other hand, we have bullet point number, according to Tim's math, seven, and I trust him as well, that Mr. Wojcik needs to sign off on this. If you don't have the information necessary, that you're happy that 68% is a fair figure for the town, then don't sign. When you have the information that makes you happy that that's a fair figure for the town of Douglas, then, as far as I'm concerned, go ahead and sign off.
I have a slick motion for that, if you'd like to hear it.
Do you?
I actually do. I would move...
Okay.
Yeah, are you ready?
I'm ready.
And we can go for, I've thought about this. That doesn't happen often.
There are so many ways that could go, but let's say the motion.
I would move that we put the authority of signature of said agreement between the town of Douglas and Telstone at Max discretion, and he may sign off on that when he feels comfortable with the supporting data provided by the school business office.
Wait and see if there's a second.
Because that means that we don't have to bring it up here again, which will set me off on probably another tirade.
Is there going to be a second?
I don't know.
You can see the wood burning over here next to me.
He's cooking.
Yeah, I mean, I get, I get the predicament that you put the contractor in, but...
I don't think we should put Matt in the middle. I think when he's satisfied, he should bring it back to us, and then we'll approve the contract required.
I think Mr. Morris's motion is somewhat redundant. As I read item number apparently seven, it already gives him that authority. He would have to sign off his approval. I don't think that we have to dissect his approval any further. He's not going to sign it if he doesn't approve.
All right.
Well, I guess what it comes down to is who's the chief executive officer? And I go at it from the presumption that it is the board selectmen. I'm your chief procurement officer, you've appointed me to that role. I'll advise you on those things that you have to do, that I might have some expertise in as your chief procurement officer through the training I've gotten.
I had assumed that term referred to you when I was going on that assumption.
No, I think I'm your chief administrative officer, but when it comes to typically, I mean, town media can do what it wants, it can assign people, but...
Having, having heard that excellent explanation from our chief procurement officer, I will now second Mr. Morris's motion.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Matt, are you comfortable with that?
I am. I appreciate the support. I look at it this way, it's a good deal to lock in the rates for next year, even if we don't know what the, what we're multiplying against. That's not, that was a generous move by Telstone. That was a concession, if you will, sort of, knowing that fuel prices are going to be that much lower.
That was my first thought.
It's kind of like giving away money that you're not going to get any, that you wouldn't have, shouldn't have gotten anyway. I don't want to set a tone ever where we can estimate a number when the big, the underlying number is a big number. The difference between 68% of the Telstone contract and 65% of the Telstone contract is 3% of, help me out here, Jean, is it 1.3 million?
40 grand.
What's the, what's the, what do we have in the budget for the school bus contract all in?
Well, that would often include sped. So we don't, you know, let me just put the Telstone...
Well, this contract doesn't specify whether it's general services or special education. It's one line in the budget. What's that one line? It escapes me.
Correct. But the transportation line does include sped transportation as well. The total budget for transportation is 1,558.
1,558. There's nothing in here that specifies sped or not sped, correct? I don't see anything in here. I don't see anything.
Actually, in the second bullet point, there is something that addresses that.
But we pay other vendors, we can multiply this spend, and we also have on the sped line, we have B and P, A H, and so there's other vendors that are also built into that transportation line. It's not yet Telstone.
Okay, that's fair. So the, when we look at the general transportation number, which you have in a breakout and I don't.
The general transportation is 7,02351. I'm sorry, that's bad. General is 8,5565.
5653, that's what I thought it was, 800,000. So, you know, what, and there's, they've already been, they've already been paid for the year up to that point, correct?
We have paid up through March 15.
So we're paying 68% of some remainder that may only be 100 some odd thousand dollars.
So we, 8,5563.
See, this is actually pretty easy, if you can.
Well, there may be some Trans, Telstone sped portion that we have to pay under that contract, but not all of the sped budget is Telstone.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear.
I guess my point would be, even if the remainder is only 150,000, well, it's a quarter of the year, call it $220,000, 200, call it $210,000. 68% of that versus 60% of that would still be $16,000. It's not a trivial sum of money when we're in the crisis we're in. So that's why I'm, I'm not trying to be overly demanding, but it's how we're doing things to get the budget under control in Douglas, is to pay attention to those 1% and 2%. So if it's 66 and not 68, I only want to pay 66%. And I want numbers to support that decision to pay, and all of our vendors provide us with that, either in the form of an itemized invoice or other detail. I'm not saying that the school side never saw it, or they didn't do any math, I'm just saying that they didn't share that math with us. And I mean both me and Gene, I don't think either one of us can say we know where 68% comes from. Right, Gene?
I did not know what the percentage is, but I, like I said, I know Douglas did not do this by themselves, so I don't know, I wasn't in the room, so I don't know what transportation took place to come up with the big move in that.
Well, if it's all the same to everybody, I don't, I don't have any problem taking responsibility to find out how that number was arrived at. If it's a good number, I'll defend it and present it and recommend it. If it's not a good number, then we don't, I don't know that we need to be beholden with what everybody else did. If the other two districts made a mistake, there's no reason for us to.
So, is there a motion and is that on?
I second Kevin's motion.
So we're just giving Matt the authority that when he feels comfortable and manages to get to that number, he can then execute the contract based on his discretion. You good with that?
I was close to voting no, but I'll support it.
All right. Can I get a roll, is there anyone else, like Hal, are you comfortable with the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes?
I am in trouble.
Can I get a roll call vote then?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye. All right. So that brings us to consider an approved procedure, applications for temporary outdoor seating and alcohol, and possible votes. So, and I have a very thick memorandum here, in my packet, anyway. Which consists of a big chunk of it is the order from the governor.
It's backup, right?
So, I can just make it easy, I'll just go through what's on the memo. So on June 1st, Governor Baker issued Order 35 pursuant to his authority under the state of emergency. This order laid out the framework for certain businesses to reopen or partially reopen under Phase 2 of the gradual lifting measures responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is more important to note that up until June 1st, municipalities did not have any binding guidance on the reopening process for the subject businesses. Any and all advice provided to the business owners before June 1st would have been predicated on the best available information at the time given, including the application of various land use, life safety, and building codes as written. Under the terms of Order Number 35, Section 4, the governor authorizes the municipalities to approve outdoor dining and service of alcohol notwithstanding the provision of zoning laws or the terms of any special permits or variances issued under the zoning law. The order also includes a general waiver of any other general or special law to the contrary, a dangerously vague and potentially overreaching catch-all. Making matters more awkward, the order also notes that the approval.
You read this, just so you get to the colorful part, didn't you?
I did.
Who could blame him, Mr. Administrator?
You know I like the colorful parts.
Colors!
To make matters more awkward, the order also notes that the approval of the expanded dining and alcohol services is temporary and will revert back to its status prior to the approval of the change for expansion on November 1st, 2020, or the date of the rescission of order, whichever comes first. So, do I need to go through? Temporary certificate of occupancies are issued by the building official notwithstanding the BOS's approval of the expansion, and the event that the zoning bylaws or, that doesn't seem right, or the general bylaws of the town apply to the permanent construction or temporary structure contemplated by the applicant, the building official may issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, continued upon the issuance. Oh, I lost my place. Of any necessary special permits or variances appropriate to the board or official notwithstanding the BOS's approval. Order that will be valid until November 1st, 2020, or the recession of Order Number 35, whichever comes first. A notice to all the butters and the public, town website will push a general notice to the public agenda item no less than 48 hours before the BOS meeting. I'm not going into items 3 or 4 under the attachments, I've lived those too much already.
No, so that's the process. Suzanne did a nice job, I think, here of putting together a new license for this, new license application.
Yes.
It's thoughtful, and it's got all the information that's necessary, and has a placard for the temporary license. It has all the necessary guidelines that were issued by the ADCC quite some time ago, actually, 2015. So it's all there, once you approve that process, then you can properly go forward to approve the license for the picket fence. Was they, for all intents and purposes, have done all of this?
Suzanne did do a nice job on that.
Yeah, it's crisp.
Have other entities in town pursued the possibility of outdoor seating and alcohol service?
So we have a new, another applicant that's going to take a completely different path to getting this done. They've been in already, the chairman and I met with them to review all the steps that are necessary. It's a different proposal, it doesn't involve construction of new stuff. So it's a slightly different path, but I think we're in a good spot.
Yeah.
You know, the chairman delivered all the applications and background information to the ownership group there at the Grill on Main, and hopefully, they'll be able to go forward. I mean, the, I'll make it a matter of public record, our recommendation to them is, since they don't intend to make a permanent structure, to get somebody who's very familiar as their line of work is to erect these tents, they know the code, they know what they have to do to weigh the thing down, tie the thing down, just hire somebody to do it, and don't try to do it yourself, don't try to build anything. And we just sensitize them to the considerations. If you're open outside, your indoor facilities for restrooms have to be open to your patrons, so you have to think about ADA compliance. So if you're down on, follow a steep grade, you've got to figure out how people with a disability might be able to use a restroom, so they're, what would be acceptable, is it porta potties or some other temporary structure that the building official can sign off on? Those are the important considerations. Those are the only two we've had so far. I know there's a private club, but the rules for private clubs, and that's just the extension, I believe, of alcohol to the outside.
Yeah, yeah, they're not doing.
That's a different, it's a related but different conversation.
Yes. So, and I know that the Grill has already reached out to a tent company, so I think they're expecting, hopefully, they'll be moving along pretty quickly on that. But yeah, Suzanne did a fantastic job on the packet. And it does seem to streamline it a little bit. Would entertain a motion for implementing the process as presented.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the, is it the liquor license that we're approving for the picket fence?
That's the last piece left, yeah.
Yep. So entertain a motion to approve the liquor license for the picket fence as presented.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made. Did you have something, Hal?
Second.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye. All right, so that brings us to ratify and sign the town administrators amended contract and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, sir, duly noted.
So in what, you already voted on this?
Yeah, I'm thinking, we've done this like nine times, so I would just move approval.
Yep.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye.
But now that we have a document, we can sign it.
Yes.
Sign it before you leave tonight.
You got it.
Please, I will sign it as well.
All right, so approve minutes and possible votes.
Any preference?
Roll call. Those look okay to me. I would make a motion that we approve the minutes for the June 9th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I would second.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Bone and abstain.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye. Your report good, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, while we end up, ended up having to ask DOR for more money than we needed for July, I think it's a very valuable exercise to go through a municipal budget on a month-to-month basis with your department heads, and understand how the organization takes in funds and spends them. Because every month, it's a creature unto itself, and different departments have different big bills that come due at different points in the year. And while we, hopefully, knock on wood, will never find ourselves under so much final financial distress as a municipality that we would have to know what our cash flow is, it's good to know, it's good to know, like, for instance, this year, the way the year ends, we end with no remainder, with no leftover, it's, we don't have a split payroll at the end of this year. It's a very unusual circumstance, actually. So your big payroll months, the months with three payrolls processed, are June and December, so actually, December and then June. So you have three payrolls that will hit the general ledger in those two months. I can go on and on and on, right? It's not necessary. But it is informative going forward for the next two months. So we'll try to get the detailed spreadsheet to you for the August request and September request. If you think this through, this is deficit spending, not budgeting, deficit technically speaking, so it's not a spending plan, you ask for the authority to spend funds, if you don't spend them, they're not spent. If you pass a budget in September, that you're only deducting from your approving balance what you actually spent during that period when you didn't have a budget. So it'll be interesting to see how all this shakes out. It's a lot of work for us on our side, especially going to be a lot of work for Gene, I think, the month of September is going to be kind of gross, for the lack of a more scientific term, because in the middle of the month, we'll be, hopefully, we'll get a budget from town meeting, and then we'll have to reconcile what the departments have already spent with what town meeting has authorized, and that is their remaining balance for the rest of the year. Added to this is the complexity that one of the, or a couple of the requests for spending reductions in order to meet revenue reductions that are before you involve changes to the municipal expenditure side that are fairly significant. So if we do a 2.5% haircut across the major expense accounts, which is one of the thoughts, it puts pressure on, we're going to be further below 1/12 of last year's recap, because we've decided to cut certain spending. So the faster we can get the guidance on those issues, the better off we'll be in preparing the budget that will be, I think, forwarded to the FinCom on behalf of the board, because it'll be, your policy recommendations are a necessary part of the conversation. So I'm still open to any questions that anybody has. The model I sent to everyone is a scenario model with that first spreadsheet called Control Panel. You can say, type the word yes or no next to the different spending savings options, and it filters through the model. It also, if there's an idea that incurs expenses, for example, laying off an employee would require us to pick up unemployment, those increases are also built in, so there's net savings versus raw savings, you know, gross savings. So having said that, I think we're coming to the conclusion of our work on the budget, and we turn it over to the, to the folks that are elected or appointed to oversee the final steps of the process. But we're stand-ready as a resource to answer any questions about how the scenarios work or why they were recommended over others. As far as.
Matt, if I could, just to be clear, we're working off of your June 1 budget submission that you sent.
The June 1 budget submission, I, we have minor edits, so like, tonight, it came, doing the month-to-month budget made you, made us realize, oh my goodness, if we rent a tent, we're going to be renting it in the new fiscal year. If FinCom sends out a flyer for ATM, they'll be sending it out in the new fiscal year, so those costs have to be borne up. And there were a couple of departments who went along with their budget for a couple of technology licenses, and they were short. And I discovered that today during the month-to-month reconciliation. So there's, there's probably about 15,000, 16,000 that I would add to the bottom line of the June 1 budget, so I'll have to get a more recent version to you. But yeah, that June 1, talking of a budget of millions, that's going to be pretty much spot on, and usually rounding error counts for the 10,000, 11,000 bucks. So that's where we are in the process. Like I said, we're a resource to try to help everybody hit deadlines. hit the deadlines. The second thing I would preview for the public is that because we've gone to a full-blown ATM, we won't be doing a merely financial warrant. There are gonna be a number of important items on the annual town meeting warrant that may generate significant interest. That focus on economic development, but they become translated into specific proposals around the disposal of municipal property, zoning amendment, and any potential agreement we might meet as a town with a potential developer. Those might show up. And it's vitally important for folks to understand that all along, the conversation has been about trying to improve the revenue strength of the town Douglas through economic development, to diversify the tax base and to take some of the burden off the residential taxpayer. Economic development can be hard to do when your most attractive properties, most attractive locations are hemmed in on all sides by zoning code regulations that are well-intended but may not actually be detailed enough or specific enough to give proper guidance to people who have to make multimillion-dollar decisions. So in an attempt to clarify those things, will be a lot of activity at EDC and Planning Board and this board over the next five or six weeks before the warrant is closed again, to try to get some things on the meeting warrant that will be necessary to move the town forward in terms of revenue over the next year. Does that capture it, Mr. Chairman?
That does capture it.
Okay. That's my report. We've had almost no activity on the COVID-19 front. We have one new case on a baseline of zero, so we have one person who's being quarantined actively, I believe. And we're just waiting to see what the state's revenue forecast is gonna look like and what the rest of the national experience, as we reopen the economy and whether or not we'll be able to sustain the reopening effort, is still an open question. So the EOC still meets once a week to consider the scenarios around that. Now I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. I can't think of any other open session topics for discussion.
Well, just back to the budget. I mean, at some point within the next three, four, five weeks or so, we're gonna be asked to probably cut into that deficit via cuts. Are we still operating on the Appendix A of said memo earlier?
Yeah, so the budget I, I've built, everything I said I've recommended, I typed in yes to balance the budget.
Okay.
And I think now with a couple of the additions for town meeting expenses and whatnot, I'll be very, it's just about 400,000 that needs to be closed with free cash. That's the standing recommendation. So if we back off any of the things I've recommended for savings, then that number will go up and more free cash would be allocated to, to cover operating expenses.
I would, I would like us to be prepared, like, and really prepared to sit down and give the go-ahead based off of the recommendations and see how we feel about them. I'd like to get this done before July. Like, this needs to be moving forward and sitting in front of FinCom for their flyer so we can adjust our month-to-month expenditures based off of the new proposed budget in the new fiscal year. So I'd like us to be ready to make these decisions next meeting or the meeting after. Just say X. Oh, we're not sharing the screen, so we're the only ones that see it anyway. I have to do a software update on that thing. Anyway, that's kinda where I sit with it. The sooner that we can get that moving, because I know that one of the options that's in there does have an impact on employees, or actually, a couple of them do.
Yeah.
And I don't want them to be sitting there sweating it out, or if we're going to do something, it's best to get that done and start moving forward. So that would be my ask of the rest of the board. Is there anything else?
Just happy to see Mr. Bone and back at the big table. Looking forward to the day when we're all here.
We missed you, big guy.
Feel the love. Thank you, guys. It's good to be back.
Any update on regional things?
No, it's been regionally quiet.
There's no regional plans?
I'm aware of. No, it's, I think there was an election, and I didn't feel comfortable voting, not knowing the key players, so I was gonna let nature take its course there.
Mr. Davis, you got anything?
Well, I'm glad we got Mr. Bone in there representing us regionally. That's one thing we don't have to worry about.
Excellent.
Tim's never coming again.
Probably never get a chance to wear the deputy hat.
Not with how active Mr. Bone is.
Yeah.
He's the real sheriff in town. Mr. Hughes?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Gilz, aye.
Morse, aye. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.